I am Patty Robles, a member of the Legal Women Voters Wayzetta Plymouth area and your moderator for the Plymouth City Council. City Council at Large and Ward One Candidate Forum. I would like to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our hosts, the Legal Women Voters Wayzetta Plymouth area. The Legal Women Voters, a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy issues through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the Legal Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates' issues that are important to you. This evening's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Plymouth City Council at Large and Ward One. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Each candidate will be allowed a two-minute opening statement to state their experience, platform, and objectives. A 15-second warning signal will be given before the total time has elapsed. A question-and-answer period will be held following the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Questions will be answered by the candidates in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. The candidates will also be given two minutes for a closing statement. Candidates, please finish your sentences quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated. Recordings of this forum may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League only allows audio/video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety, except by the media reporting on the event. The candidates for the Plymouth City Council at Large and Ward One are Alyssa McGregor, City Council Ward One, Melinda Sohoney, City Council Ward One, Paul Hillen, City Council at Large, and Jim Willis, City Council at Large. We will begin the City Council Ward One candidates to give their two-minute introductory remarks, starting with Alyssa McGregor, candidate for City Council Ward One.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Elise McGregor. I'm a wife, mother of two girls, nurse, entrepreneur, and the current city Plymouth City Council member for Ward One. I was appointed to this position in April of 2019. I care deeply about the high quality of life for Plymouth residents. Being the only woman on the council, I bring a unique perspective to robust discussions resulting in a shared vision. I'm hardworking, authentic, and believe in the future of Plymouth. Public safety, infrastructure, fiscal responsibility, and strong community engagement are what I hope for Plymouth. Ward One has seen tremendous growth, and it is critical to have strong infrastructure and public safety for the growing area of the city, providing high-quality services based on the needs of the city while keeping the costs responsible. Strong community engagement allows for residents' voices to be heard and included. It is important that residents' voices are at the root of my decision-making. Council members should be an extension of the residents' voices. I'm on the Plymouth Civic League, a trustee for the Music in Plymouth Endowment Fund, and an active volunteer in the community. I volunteer in the community to give back to the community that is given to me. I am open-minded with effective and inclusive communication. I am focused on economic development and balancing the needs of the community with the cost of delivering high-quality services. I will listen, learn, and advocate. I love Plymouth. I've lived here for almost 10 years and have had my company headquarters here for 11. I'm honored to be serving the residents of Ward One. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Sohoney, City Council Ward One.
First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing me a platform to speak to my neighbors. Hello, my name is Melinda Sohoney, and I'm seeking your support in the election this November for Plymouth City Council from Ward One. As a resident of Plymouth for the past 25 years, I'm passionate about giving back to the community which has provided my children the best education possible and my family the quality of life many people can only dream about. I arrived in Cincinnati to pursue a doctorate in chemistry with only $750 in my pocket in 1983. Later, I earned an MBA from the Carlson School of Management at the University of Minnesota. My wife of 33 years and the love of my life, Amita, has been by my side through it all. My two children have dedicated their lifelong work in the education field as they work to eliminate systemic inequities in education. As the former chairman of the Bombay University Students Council, representing 130 colleges and 200,000 students, much larger than Ward One population, I plan on bringing my strong leadership skills to the council should I get elected. Since then, I have transitioned successfully from being a scientist to business development for Fortune 500 companies to entrepreneurship, proving my adaptability in taking on new responsibilities. I will work to promote diversity in the council committees and commissions. Being a scientist who believes that climate change is real, I will promote environmental initiatives to reduce our carbon footprint. By investments in infrastructure, services, and education, I will work on developing Plymouth as a city of excellence. I strongly believe in fiscal responsibility, which I have followed in both my business and personal life. I understand the value of education and will champion educational equity in our schools. I would love to meet you, understand your expectations from the City Council, and work toward making Plymouth the best city to live in. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from our City Council at Large candidates, beginning with Paul Hillen, City Council at Large.
Hello, my name is Paul Hillen, and my wife Karen and I are 19-year residents of Plymouth. We've raised our four kids here and have been very active in the community. I've coached youth sports, actively volunteer in my church, mentored kids and business leaders, and support local charities. We love Plymouth. I'm not a politician or a bureaucrat. I have not spent my lifetime running for office or working in government. I'm simply your neighbor and a resident of Plymouth, just like you. So what prompted me to run? Well, I've watched Plymouth change significantly over the past 10 years, and not all for the good. It has been frustrating observing areas that need to be redeveloped, like the Four Seasons Mall, yet nothing has been done. It has been frustrating watching our traffic get more congested and less safe. It has been frustrating watching Plymouth go from the number-one place in America to live to now on the verge of just becoming another crowded suburb. It has been frustrating watching our schools get overcrowded and watching our green space and recreational lands destroyed. It has been frustrating watching our neighborhoods flood and regular power outages due to our overdevelopment and lagging infrastructure. It's been frustrating watching our elected officials spend your tax dollars on things we either don't need or could have been done by the private sector. It's frustrating that Plymouth does not have a true downtown city center and no real plan or vision for what the city should look like in five to 10 years. We can do better. We need new leadership in Plymouth. I have over 30 years of business experience and will bring accountability and financial and strategic expertise to the role. My priorities are better strategic city planning and redevelopment, including a real city center in downtown, preservation of green space and recreational land, responsible spending of your taxpayer dollars, strong police and public safety, and open, honest communication, including listening to you versus believing I know what is best for you. I will represent you, the real people of Plymouth, who have real issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Jim Willis, candidate for City Council at Large. You're on mute.
It says unmute. Am I unmuted? Okay, I'll start again. Good evening. I'm Jim Willis. I'm honored to have served as your City Council Member at Large and asked for your vote on November the 3rd. I know and love this city. My experience has helped the City Council successfully address the opportunities and challenges facing our community. We are headed in the right direction, but there's more work to be done. Plymouth is maturing as a diverse community of residents with a rich variety of religious traditions, ethnic, and racial identities. Once a smaller village of farmers, we have grown to be welcome neighbors whose values and traditions have made Plymouth a better place to live and raise healthy families. I support the establishment of a new Human Rights Commission to ensure that all human rights are respected, protected, and validated. We are one vibrant and inclusive community. In this time of racial reckoning, Plymouth should make conscious efforts to become a more equitable place for all to live and work. I'm honored to have been a Plymouth resident since 1971. My wife and I have raised our family here. In this moment, we are in the midst of a global pandemic that is impacting our kids, our families, our businesses, and our economy. We are also in a culture war over facts. I will continue to make local policy recommendations based on science, not politics, to ensure a healthy community. These times, the political division and fear-driven leadership risk tearing us apart. Local communities like Plymouth are where people can and do come together. When we start from a place of respect, hope, and vision, we can create a committee that works for all of us. I will appreciate your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now start the questions, and you'll be answering in a rotating order, and you each will have one minute. Jim Willis will be answering the question first. And what do you see are the top three issues facing our city in particular, and how do you plan to address these?
Well, I think the first one, as I mentioned just a few moments ago, and that has to do with ensuring that we're accommodating to all people in our community to encourage and validate their worldly life experiences and to get them to help us make Plymouth a stronger and more cohesive community. We've grown tremendously in racial diversity over these past years, and I think that's a blessing that's going to provide riches for our community in years ahead. Secondly, I think we need to continue to watch our spending and our taxes. We enjoy one of the lower tax rates of cities in the metropolitan area. That's a tradition the city's had for many years. We have excellent services. We recently have started hiring full-time firefighters to ensure and improve our public safety operations. And thirdly, I think we need to continue to focus work on our repair of our streets, our street reconstruction program, to ensure that our assets are protected, and that can only happen through appropriate maintenance, which I support.
Thank you. Next, Paul Hillen.
Well, I believe the first priority has to be about redevelopment. We are moving into another phase of the city where open tracts of farmland have been developed, and just simply approving development is no longer going to be next phase. So the first thing has to be around redevelopment and infrastructure. The city has grown significantly, and I don't believe that we've kept up with it. We have to look at areas, as I mentioned in my opening, about things like Four Seasons Mall and some of the more tired and older parts of the city. The second is around fiscal responsibility. I mean, we, in the previous year's budget, we took tax levy up 4.9%. This year is proposed at 7.6%. We've got to find more private or public-private investment to offset those, and we need to find ways to increase our user fees because we can't keep taxing folks. And then the third is we've got to preserve our recreation land and our green space. We've let developers come in and build, 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 and we've let some of these jewels go by the wayside. We've got to protect more of the green space.
Thank you. As a reminder, please remember to put your mute on when you're finished speaking. Melinda Sohoney.
On my platform, there are four issues, but the top three issues are, number one, diversity. I don't believe Plymouth Council or the committees or commissions are as diverse as they should be. They do not reflect the demographics of the population of the city. So as a council member, I will promote diversity in the council committees and commissions by targeted outreach to underrepresented communities. Number two, I think, as Paul said earlier, Plymouth used to be a city of excellence, was number one in 2008. This year, I have not seen it in the top 100. There must be some reasons why it is not. So I will work hard toward that to make the city a city of excellence by investing in infrastructure, services, and education. Enough of the buildings. We need more green space. And that's number three on my list. Environmental initiatives promote environmentally conscious decisions-making, focusing on recycling and renewable energy to reduce our carbon footprint.
Thank you. Elise McGregor, and I want to apologize for not pronouncing your name correctly.
No worries. So as I mentioned, Ward One has had a tremendous amount of growth over the last few years, and I think infrastructure and managing that growth and making sure that any future growth is very intentional is what I feel is best for Ward One. And secondly, with our economic unprecedented times, Plymouth is the fourth-largest economy, and it's critical that we support our businesses. There's no doubt that there's going to be economic challenges ahead, and I feel that the city needs to look at advocating for flexibility with these city ordinances, small business grants, et cetera, the things we're doing to support and ensure that fiscal management, economic prosperity is inherently tied to residents' quality of life. And the third is a safe community. And I'm out of time.
Thank you. Melinda Sohoney, you'll be first with the next question, and this question is Plymouth Council is considering adding a full-time staff position dedicated to diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of the 2021 budget process. Do you support or oppose this consideration, and why?
Diversity, equity, and inclusion are guiding principles and commitments made to the demographic makeup of the city. Let me be very clear that I'm in a total support of adding either a staff member or a committee to bring a cultural, culture of DEI in the City Council. DEI is a commitment. Those are guiding principles. I hope the council is not going to rely on the staff member to incorporate the Human Rights Commission. I hope that the City Council itself will make that decision. On July 28th, in a study session, one of the council members, I will not name the person, but one of the council members said that immigrants, oh, sorry, the Human Rights Commission is nothing but a good, a feel-good group of individuals who will do nothing but cause trouble to the beautiful city of Plymouth. That is not something we should talk about. This is not something that a council member should say, and I strongly oppose that.
Thank you. Next is Elise McGregor.
Yes, our community is changing, and we need to change with our community. I believe my role is to amplify the community's voice. When people don't feel included, they don't feel part of the community, and our problem-solving breaks down. It's imperative to facilitate relationship building and ensure that everyone feels included. Currently, we do have the staff position in the 2021 budget for diversity, inclusion, and equity, and I do support that. As I did last night, the goal is to have the staff member help facilitate the commission and allow for residents to be involved. There's always more work to be done, but I do support both.
Thank you. Next is Jim Willis.
There. As I said in my earlier remarks, the diversity that we have in our community is marvelous. It's a resource that we haven't fully tapped. And I'm the first to admit, as one of six white guys on the City Council, that I don't think the council members themselves are capable or should be charged with the responsibility to themselves to create this equity and inclusion and the BIPEC issues that we have to address. We need to tap those resources in the community. They're abundant in the community. And I think that while I support the position that's in the budget, I don't think that staff person is going to be the end-all. We must get the community involvement, and I think that we can do that. And it's got to be a very diverse group, not made up of City Council folks.
Thank you. Paul Hillen.
Well, first, of course, I support inclusion and diversity. I worked for Procter &amp; Gamble for 15 years. I worked for Cargill, a local Minnesota company here for almost 16. I've traveled over 40 countries in my career and have seen the power of a diverse community and the power of thought of different perspectives. I certainly support that. One of the things I love about Plymouth is the fact that we are unbelievably welcoming. When I go to Fire and Ice, when I go to Plymouth on Parade, when I go to Music in the Park, I see the diversity and I see us getting along. Regarding the specific position, I would need to see what the role and responsibility is because I think our current staff does a pretty good job, whether it's through the Fair Voting Act or some of the other programs that we have of doing a pretty good job. I believe we need to have a focus on it. I want to make sure that we're not just adding a position where we've already got staff. We have eight already existing departments and over 50 sub-departments. I'd like to see all of them take up this issue, and it's not necessarily just on the position of one person.
Thank you. Our next question, Paul Hillen, you'll be answering first. It looks like the Plymouth City Council is considering reinstating the Human Rights Commission. Do you support that? And if so, what would you like to see it accomplish?
Well, again, I think it's a similar answer to the one that I just gave is, first of all, I'd have to understand what would be the charter of the Human Rights Commission? What exactly would they be doing that the current staff, which is a significant staff, and that our budget of $90 million doesn't accomplish already? Obviously, human rights is critical, right? And I think Plymouth, we've been a leader. We've been a leader in diversity, inclusion, and human rights, and so I want to make sure that we don't have a solution looking for a problem. As I said, I believe Plymouth has done a great job, and we've been a leader in the state of Minnesota. So I'd want to see what the charter is of the commission, specifically what their objectives and what their goals are and what they would need to accomplish if they were, in fact, chartered and commissioned. So I believe the objectives are critical. Adding potentially more bureaucracy and cost, I'd want to really understand that it's not a duplication of efforts that we already have.
Thank you. Jim Willis.
Thank you. The position that's proposed in the city's budget, the divine, we have not fully defined the job description on it. But I can tell you this, is that the city staff in this city is, compared to many cities, very lean. And more particularly with respect to diversity and inclusion and trying to meet the objectives that we've talked about here, that is inclusion of people of color, indigenous populations, and the Black community. Those communities have to be involved. It can't be done through city staff. We can't, we don't have the background. We don't have the credibility with those communities to try to solve problems that they alone need to have addressed, and we need to have them included in our deliberations, be represented on all our boards, and hopefully our City Council. At time, we need to get diversity in action. It's not a bureaucracy. It's human understanding and working together to make Plymouth a stronger and more cohesive community.
Thank you. Melinda Sohoney.
Yes, as I said earlier, the staff position for the DEI is basically a guiding principle and commitments made to the demographic makeup of the city. Let me be very clear that I'm in total support of adding either a staff member or a committee to bring a cultural, culture of DEI in the City Council. However, the Human Rights Commission, I believe, is a different cup of tea. In 1948, the United Nations made a 30, a list of 30 Universal Declaration of Human Rights, some of them being employment, housing, whistleblower protection, and similar things that are not under the purview of a DEI staff. And those require, those require an entirely different commission to look after. It's a constitutional right, unlike the diversity, equity, and inclusion. Those are not constitutional rights, but they are commitments that we are going to make.
Thank you. Elise McGregor.
Yes, thank you. I do support the Human Rights Commission, and as I mentioned before, I think it's important for all residents to have a voice, but I think the community engagement on bringing forth human rights issues and things that the council is only seven people, and I think it's important to get feedback and the information from another commission where I look at, we have several commissions that meet frequently and bring issues and policy ideas to the council, and I think it's very important to have everyone included in that discussion and also be able to bring up issues in the community that maybe the council isn't aware of.
Thank you. Elise McGregor, you'll be first with our next question. What are your views on the Green Step Initiative? Please be specific on why you would or would not support it.
Thank you. I did not support the Green Steps initiative, and my rationale for that was in looking at all of the initiatives that were presented, we had a study session as well as had public comments in a regular council meeting, and the city of Plymouth is already doing 80 of 180, 88 of 180 initiatives. And what I felt from those two meetings was our staff are very aware of the issues that are relevant to specifically the city of Plymouth, and I was not in favor of adopting a program when the city engineer and staff are able to look at initiatives that are relevant just for the city of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda Sohoney.
The council's turning down a golden opportunity to be a part of the Green Step Cities offered by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency earlier this year was a big surprise to me, especially so since there was nothing special expected of the city in return. It was a freebie. A great chance to market our city as a leader in tackling environmental initiatives was lost. I would certainly have voted for the city to be part of the initiative. My platform should be proof of my intent. Our generation needs to set an example to the younger generation. As a resident of Plymouth said after the down vote, it's a symbolic act that you give a damn about the future.
Thank you. Jim White, I'm sorry, Jim Willis.
The Green Steps program is one of those kinds of issues and activities that gets tainted by partisanship and tends to blur, I think, what the purpose is. I think the purpose is and should be a kind of a clearinghouse of best practices and ideas that we can all consider and use to make our communities better, better stewards of our environment and to cope with the impending impacts of global climate change. And I personally, I support it because I thought that was a free resource. I wasn't worried about them taking over the city government, or some feared that the United Nations was going to somehow take over the government of Plymouth. I think that part of it's nonsense. It was a resource, and I personally think we missed an opportunity.
Thank you. Paul Hillen.
As I said in my opening comments, I mean, I think we've got to do a better job of preserving our green space and our recreational land. The other thing that I said is that Plymouth has been a real leader, and this is another area where Plymouth has been a leader. As Elise mentioned, you know, we're doing over 80, and I think it's now over 90 of what the Green Step Cities asked for. So I think one of the issues was, I was at the study session, I was also at the meeting, I've watched every or been in attendance of every City Council meeting for the last 12 months. And I think the issue was is that, does our staff, will our staff be burdened with more paperwork bureaucracy when we've already got this in our vision? It's already a critical component and priority of the city of Plymouth, and we're leading in this space. So I don't know if I would necessarily support that Plymouth take on that additional bureaucracy. What I do support is Plymouth continuing to look at all of those components of the Green Step Cities and continuing to make extremely sound, environmentally conscious decisions, which, again, I want Plymouth to lead, not be led or follow.
Thank you. Paul Hillen, you'll be first with this next question. What do you see as the greatest challenges facing businesses in Plymouth, especially with the pandemic? And what role will or should the City Council have in supporting businesses?
Well, I think the greatest challenge is getting people back into their Well, I think the, the greatest challenge is getting people back into their places. I run a business right now. I'm an entrepreneur. I run my own business, and we've been hurt significantly. And getting people to get into, in, back into those stores, into restaurants, into dining locations where they feel comfortable. I think the city has done a darn good job already with helping those businesses. And I think making them as safe as possible and giving people the reassurance that they're safe. People are following the protocol with masks. The businesses are doing outdoor dining. They're doing physical distancing, all those kinds of things. So I think getting those businesses open to a hundred percent as quickly as possible and helping them with guidelines is what they need. They need to be able to run their businesses the way that they were running them before because there's nothing more important than a vibrant, vibrant economic Plymouth.
Thank you. Jim Willis. Jimmy, you're on mute.
Excuse me. Plymouth has a record of being a, a very good community in which to do business. This pandemic has obviously crippled all our businesses. The protocols that have been promulgated by the federal government and the state of Minnesota are guiding us as we try to work with our community, and that's the whole community, to deal with the impacts of this pandemic. The first issue is, of course, we can't open up carte blanche. We, I, I hope now everybody understands that's not a very good strategy. We have to wear our masks. We have to wash our hands. We have to have social distancing. We have to take the steps to try to reduce the spread of this terrible disease. And until we get a hold of that, we're not going to be able to get, get the disease spreading down to a rate where businesses will, I think, be comfortable and successful in opening up. Opening up prematurely, I think, is more damaging to businesses than having to bear the pain of being closed longer until it is safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Elise McGregor.
COVID- nineteen has changed our economic landscape, and over the last five months, I've been working with the city staff to, like I mentioned, advocate for flexibility to support the businesses. But primarily, it's really important, as others have mentioned, for people to feel safe. And so I think the city's role to the point of supporting businesses is the most critical, and what each individual needs are for the business is what we can do to help support because Plymouth is dependent on a strong economy, and we all have noticed the difference that it has been crippling, and we have to support our businesses to help them get back to their economic growth from the pre, pre-COVID times.
Thank you. Melin Sohany.
Yeah, I, I was fortunate to own a franchise for fifteen years. I sold it last year. And in a sense, I am glad I did because I don't have to go through what many of the small businesses are going through. I feel so bad for them. I even follow the business model, the franchise that I owned at one time, and I can see that they're hurting. This is not how it should have been. Unfortunately, this is how it is. COVID- nineteen has turned our lives upside down. However, Plymouth is doing a darn good job of making sure that it is enforcing the mask rules, the social distancing rules, everything that the Minnesota Department of Health is asking us to do. I'm a contact tracer. I've been a certified contact tracer from Johns Hopkins, and I understand what not following the mask rules, the social distancing rules, how it can hurt. And therefore, I plead with everybody to follow the rules and make the businesses successful as they were always before.
Thank you. Next question, Melin Sohany, you'll be first, and the question is, affordable housing throughout the West Metro continues to be challenging. How can Plymouth City Council make it more feasible to add additional affordable housing units in Plymouth? Please be as specific as possible.
When it comes to affordable housing, I think the general view of the population, when I, when I speak with the voters, when I do my door knocking, is that that's not something that Plymouth should be a part of. I, I disagree with that. I think affordable housing is necessary, even in a prosperous city like Plymouth. And, and the reason for that is because we are a diverse community. We are a community where not everybody has the same, same resources, has the same availability of finances, and we should be welcoming to everybody in the community. Affordable housing is not something that should be looked down upon. It is something that we can always do by subsidizing with a public-private partnership, and that is something that I would pursue if I were to be elected on the city council.
Thank you. Elise McGregor.
Thank you. The Plymouth City Council needs to support a variety of growing needs in our community as population ages and demands change. When we price people out of our community, people leave and our community becomes less vibrant. Specifically to affordable housing, we need to support developers with TIF or other opportunities to come into areas where they can build and support the affordable housing that is needed in this community, and we shouldn't have that as a barrier for people moving into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Helen.
Yeah, I, I think Melin said it well is that we need to continue to reach out to the private sector and attract the developers who are the ones that do affordable housing well, and I'm a, a significant proponent of public-private partnership. I do, once again, believe that Plymouth has done a pretty good job here. You know, there's some people that believe we have too much affordable housing. There are other people that think we don't have enough, which, which, you know, when, when two sides are not necessarily happy, you say, well, maybe you've reached the place where you, where you are. Do we need affordable housing? Absolutely. Do we have very good affordable housing already in this city? Absolutely. Should we be, my number one platform item that I mentioned in the opening is that we need more thoughtful, strategic planning for this city, and affordable housing needs to be a part of it, and what Plymouth looks like, what is that component in the long-term vision for this city? Needs to be there.
Thank you. Jim Willis.
Thank you. Well, the good news is Plymouth has been long planning for affordable housing. We've done a lot of work through our Housing and Redevelopment Authority. We've sponsored a number of projects to provide for mixed-use housing from assisted living to apartments. Over on the west, the east side of the city, the Four Seasons Mall, that property is under development contract with Dominion. They appeared before the city council last night updating us on their progress. They're going to be breaking ground in the, in the spring of two thousand twenty-one on the first phase of their project, which would be workforce housing, apartment building, and later that year, the Senior Citizen Park. They've been stalled because they've been waiting for state financing assistance, which is obviously essential. We've provided tax income and financing for the developers of the Four Seasons Mall redevelopment, and that project is going to be getting off. We've also supported through our HRE, housing grants for people to maintain.
Thank you. Sorry, there's just never enough time to answer the questions in one minute, is there? Jim, we're going to start with you, Jim Willis, for the next question. What steps do you believe the city council can do to work with the police department in addressing policing reforms, training, and funding to better serve Plymouth's diverse communities? Jim Willis.
Thank you. That's, that, for me, is a very easy question to answer. First off, the Plymouth Police Department is probably one of the top police forces in the nation, not in Minnesota, the nation. Their, their training is excellent. They do superb work. They, to my knowledge, they've never had an incident that has gotten out of hand because of a racial issue. That said, Chief Goldstein and his command staff are continually bringing to the, to the officers on the beat training to avoid situations such as we saw in Minneapolis and now in other cities around the state. The police department very clearly responds to processes and problems, and I think in a reasonably fair way, I've never heard of an abuse case involving race or ethnicity.
Thank you. Paul Helen.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more with Jim Willis. I, I think Chief Mike Goldstein is phenomenal, and I think Plymouth has one of the best police forces and, and, and put fire department in there as well. Chief Goldstein has done a tremendous job. I mean, he is at the leading edge. It's a great example of Plymouth, once again, being a leader in this area, and, and I agree with Jim. I looked at the record. I don't believe there's been one incident that's ever been brought against the Plymouth Police Department. I, I looked, I could be wrong on that one, but nothing that I could certainly find. I think that we continue to support Chief Goldstein because he is looking at not just what is being done in terms of best practices around the country, but also in other countries to say, are we doing enough? Yes, we may be one of the leaders, but where can we be putting more of our efforts into, and he's already on top of it. So we need to continue to support him, and if nothing else, we need to increase his budget because he needs those resources so that we stay at the forefront of this issue.
Thank you. Melin Sohany.
Oh, yeah. We are living in a time when the public in general is losing confidence in the police and its handling of the situations, especially when it comes to the black community. However, it would be a mistake to address the issue with a broad brush. I have met with the Director of Public Safety, Mike Goldstein. Under his leadership, the Plymouth Police has done a commendable job for many years. He's a person with compassion and has gone far and beyond what his role requires. He meets regularly with representatives of the black community to discuss issues at hand. This is the kind of police we need, a force which deals appropriately with criminals while ensuring that those who are innocent have nothing to fear from them. The Plymouth Citizens Academy, which provides an opportunity for the community to learn about public safety and how the police department works, is an example in transparency worthy, worthy of emulating by other cities. This has been going on for like twenty-eight years.
Thank you. Elise McGregor.
Yes, I second the fact that Chief Goldstein has done remarkable with our Plymouth Police Department, and as our community changes, so should our policing. Having integrity and accountability as well as continuous training for our officers is critical. The Plymouth Police Department engages in a lot of community events, and it is important that the department continue to have officers that our community trusts. Integrity and accountability with honest acknowledgement of how policing is in our city, which is very good, increases the confidence that those are there to protect and serve all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Elise McGregor, you'll be first with this next question. The city council has established a system of maintaining a city council member liaison on each of the city's advisory commissions, which means one city council member attends every commission meeting. Typical, typically of advisory commissions, typically advisory commissions are there to solicit unpaid representation and advice to the city council members on various manner, matters. Do you think having city council members on advisory commissions has the possibility of inhibiting new ideas and different perspectives from reaching the city council for review and consideration?
Thank you. I would say that it does not inhibit that, and in twenty nineteen, I was the liaison for Parks and Rec. And then for twenty twenty, I'm on the Suburban Rate Authority and Suburban Transit Association. And I think it gives, I don't, when I was on it, I was not engaging. I was more listening, and it gives another perspective for the residents on those commissions to have robust discussions and then bring that to the council, and I think it's a good system, and I think that it helps with the community engagement and allows for the residents' voices to be heard, which I think is critical.
Thank you. Melin Sohany.
I disagree with, with Councilwoman McGregor on that one. I think the, the existence of a council member on the advisory committee is a hindrance. It's like Big Brother watching over the committee. The, the committee's job should be, should be without fear, without, without bias, and all they have to do is to, you know, provide the right information at the right time so the council can make a decision. I've heard of incidents where one of the council members has actually chaired a commission or two. I'm not sure about that, but I think that's, that might be true. If that's the case, it is absolutely a no-no. So I would not recommend that any of the council members be on the committee or the commissions. It needs to be a neutral, unbiased, independent body.
Thank you. Jim Willis.
I'm the CCR Council Coordinator Representative this year to the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. I've attended, they've only had one meeting to give the COVID issue, and I, I attended. I sit in the audience area. I don't sit up with them. My, I'm there to hear and listen to them, and if they have any questions about things that are going on with the council that might impact things that they're considering, I would be a resource. I don't interject myself, and I never would. It's means it was originally established back in the seventies, and the purpose was simply to keep communications flowing between the citizen bodies and the city council. And in my memory, I don't, I can't recall when council members both served on boards or commissions other than the Human Rights Commission when it was originally formulated.
Thank you. Paul Helen.
I've attended nine different meetings of four different committees or commissions, and I've observed council members there, and I think it's a good thing. I've seen them listen. For the most part, they're there to listen, and I think that they can then be a primary voice back to their colleagues on the council of what is happening on that commission. I have never seen anybody hold back on their thoughts because a council member was sitting there. I, I think the more communication between the bodies, the better, and the better representation of exactly what is being discussed and why decisions were made that get back to the council from that liaison, I think is important. I, I'm a very strong component, proponent of communicating. I don't think we have enough communication between the bodies, and we don't have enough communication between the council and the staff and the citizens of Plymouth. We need more of it, so I support that.
Thank you. And the next question, we're going to start with Melin Sohany. The city of Plymouth continues to grow. This growth, including additional housing development impact and in development impacts infrastructure, schools, and traffic. If you're elected, how will you balance growth with the importance of keeping Plymouth a great place to live and protect green spaces?
I, I think, when, when I moved to Plymouth twenty-five years ago, we had about sixty-two thousand people living in Plymouth. It's down to eighty thousand right now. I'm originally from the city of Bombay. I know what density means, and so I, I think we have grown enough. We are bulging at the seams, I believe, especially if we want to green, maintain the green space at a certain percent. I don't know what it is right now, but, you know, even if you take an example of me having ten percent green space, I don't think we, we, we are maintaining that right now. So building more houses, infrastructure, schools, and, and those kinds of things at the expense of green space, I think, is, is a big mistake, especially if you are concerned with the environmental effects of those things.
Thank you. Jim Willis.
The, the current fact is, is that under the city codes, we are, we do have regulations that provide us the opportunity, as land development is to require land for park dedication or fees in lieu thereof. Over the past number of years, particularly in Northwest Plymouth, we've run the Northwest Greenway from east of Vicksburg Lane, from Landale roughly, or over to Landale, and now around the, the wetland in that area. We've spent millions of dollars protecting and enhancing the, the open space. There's still more land to be developed, and we will acquire land as when, when it comes due as part of the park dedication, or as I said before, we'll take the park exaction fees and use that to acquire land. You'll never be able to get enough open space land that would satisfy everybody. It's always a trade-off when you're involved with development.
Thank you. Paul Helen.
Yeah, I, I believe Plymouth has grown enough. We're going to be over eighty thousand people, will likely be a top five city in the state of, of Minnesota, more than likely after this next census, and we've grown extremely quickly, and we've done it at the expense of a lot of our green space and our recreational land. And I think that we need to put a pause. And I think that we need to put a pause on development and really step back and take a look at it and say, is this what we want? Do we want an overcrowded suburb where we approve without exception? The city has approved every developer that comes in and wants to build homes. We need to focus on some of our more tired areas. And we need to focus more on redevelopment and get some of those areas, you know, back to where they were initially and stop some of this development. We've allowed some green space to happen to the point where we are now, we have the second-least amount of green space of any city our size in the state of Minnesota, second to Edina. We can't let that happen. The quality of life of the citizens of Plymouth requires us to protect our green space.
Thank you.
And grow responsibly.
Elise McGregor.
Yes, Northwest Plymouth has had a lot of growth and a lot of fast growth. And my initiative related to growth is to have intentional and pause on just allowing any development that comes through. There's not a lot of land left in Northwest Plymouth. But I think that it's very important to be aware of the green space, to save the green space that we can. And it makes Plymouth a more vibrant city to have the parks that we have. The city has done a phenomenal job as to the development of parks and they're very well-maintained parks. But I think it's also important not to take development and run with it, but kind of take a pause and make sure that our infrastructure is supporting the growth that we have in the city as well.
Thank you. That is, we just don't have enough time for all of our questions. So that was our final question. And we're now going to go to the closing statements. We're going to start with Paul Hillen. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. So why make a change? Why vote for me, a 19-year resident of Plymouth with nearly 35 years of business experience versus my opponent who has over 35 years of being a politician and a bureaucrat? Because Plymouth is at a pivotal point in our history. We're facing tired parts of the city that require redevelopment. We now have the second-least amount of green space per capita than any other city in the state. Much of our recreational land has been destroyed. And a strong police force and our public safety has never been more important. We have significant stress on our road infrastructure, traffic congestion, traffic safety, water management issues, power outage issues, and school overcrowding. Developing open tracks of farmland and overseeing building projects at a rapid pace is where Plymouth has been. But the next phase of Plymouth will be very different and will require very different leadership. While Mr. Willis has served our community for many years and done a lot of good, the next phase of Plymouth requires different leadership. Plymouth more than ever needs leaders with vision, creativity, and a solution orientation. We need someone who will listen to you and not tell real people who have real issues and concerns, oh, that's just the way it is. That's the way we do it. We need someone who will communicate frequently, openly, and honestly. My business experience will bring the principles of listening to customers, fiscal responsibility, return on investment, innovation, and the ability to find creative solutions to problems. If you want someone different who believes in spending your dollars like his own, attracting private investment, keeping our police and public safety strong, and preserving our green space and recreational land, then vote for me, Paul Hillen. The difference in our experience is very clear. And the difference in our philosophy is very clear. Let's get Plymouth back to being the Plymouth that was ranked number one in America. Go to hillenforcouncil.com to learn more, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Willis.
Thank you. And again, thanks to the League for putting on this forum. It's very informative. And I hope the voters have a chance to consider everything that's being said. First and foremost, I've had a long career in the city of Plymouth. I'm a part of the progress. I am not because of it. I've had a great run here in Plymouth, the city manager, and raised my family here, been on the council. Part of the success of Plymouth has been the fact that we have prudently managed the city's fiscal affairs for generations. And that doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen by bureaucrats. It happens by public officials elected and appointed who have something in their heart that says, I want to be part of something bigger than me. And they work to achieve that. And that is what I think we have now achieved here in Plymouth. We're not done. We have work to do. There's evolution of development. We're going to have to cope with redevelopment opportunities, and we are. The Four Seasons, I just mentioned a few moments ago, is but one example. And we're going to make progress irrespective of the doubts that some people may have. I have confidence in the Plymouth people and the diversity that's here and why we need to tackle. I ask for your vote on November the 3rd. If you want further information, you go to my website, willisforcouncil.com. Thank you again.
Thank you. Malin Sohany.
I know our country is facing the challenging times with the COVID pandemic. And my heart goes out to the families of those who lost their loved ones and to the thousands still in hospitals and ICUs. I also know the strength of the city and what can we achieve when we come together in a unified manner to benefit all. A constituent of Ward 1 emailed me about systemic inequities. He asked me what I was complaining about when I had myself made it successfully in America. This election is not about me. I am in this to help those in need, those who cannot avail of the same opportunities that I did. I'm eager to be in dialogue and hear what is most important and top of mind for you. I hope to champion your ideas as we strive to make Plymouth a city that operates on the ideals of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have a breadth of understanding of what it means to work from the bottom up, how to navigate complex decision-making with multiple considerations as a former entrepreneur and data scientist, how to lead thousands of people to transformative change as a university leader, and how to empower voices most proximate to issues in decision-making. I know that the best solutions are ones where we all come together in unity. We have the potential to work together to ensure Plymouth is the best city to live in across the entire state for all its residents. I see the city coming together in a unified manner to benefit all, a city where dreamers can see their dreams come true, a city where honesty, integrity, and hard work can reap rewards to anyone who is willing. I'm a forward thinker who understands the values of equal opportunities, better education, and a diverse community. I believe that Plymouth can be a model for all of Minnesota. Please visit my website at sohanyforcitycouncil.com to learn more about me and how to get in touch. If you like what you heard, please support me. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you. Elise McGregor.
Thank you to the League for having this forum tonight. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Plymouth is a well-managed city and provides high-quality services without an unnecessary tax burden. With the experience as a current council member, I intend to work hard to make sure Plymouth is a safe community with the police department that we can trust, where all residents have a voice while providing core city services at a low tax rate. My experience will allow me to see the city through unprecedented economic times. And I'm proud to be part of this community. If you like what you heard tonight, I ask for your vote on November 3rd. And you can find more information about my platform on elisesmccreger.com. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the Plymouth City Council at Large and Ward One Candidate Forum. Thank you to the candidates, especially if you're loving your city enough to want to run for city governance. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters, Volunteers, and those viewing this event on cable and video. And thank you all for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the city of Plymouth for supporting this event and to CCX Media for recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at ccxmedia.org as well as Legal Women Voters, Wayzetta, Plymouth Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages and on our website, www.lwvwp.org. Please remember to vote in the November 3rd general election by absentee ballot or in person. Your vote is your voice. Legal Women Voters welcomes new members, both women and men, at www.lwvwp.org or on our website. Thank you and good night.